All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order for the June thirteenth study session. And ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Yes, Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice Secretary Robert Oden.
Here.
Vice President Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
President Mike Schaefer.
I'm here as well, thank you. Public comments, this is a time set aside for for the three of you to make any comments. We do have written comments. Do we need to go over these, or do you have any comments?
That's on our item number five.
Thank you. Still eight o'clock. Seeing no one with public comments, we'll go to item of study number one. And this is the best part of the meeting, Scott, so I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Mr. President. Introduce, Marissa, I'm very proud to introduce her to you. I think most of you already met Marissa at our shredding event. She was working hard at a shredding event after only being with us for a week, but now she's been with us for a month. And we're really excited to have her here because she has a wealth of experience in the solid waste management field. She gained that experience from working in several cities, including Upland, Hesperia, and Montclair. So we are excited that, you know, when she arrives, she's hit the ground running because she has all of that that knowledge experience. So please introduce to you and welcome Marissa Pareda to it to our team.
I decided to move from the inland empire to the coast. You're a very smart person. I think it was a compost event, not a shredding event, but that's okay.
You're right, it was a compost event. I got it, you're right. I'm gonna have Mark Escard, District Engineer, introduce Alex to us.
Alejandro Alex Ornelas, he goes by Alex. I think we got this, we stole him from City of Newport Beach where he was a maintenance worker once since 2018. He's worked for the city of Cerritos as a maintenance worker. He worked for Orange Coast College as a maintenance worker. And he was a custodian along the way as well. So we're really blessed to have him. I don't know if he'll we'll have to see if he can live up to David's legacy as our porter here at the agency, but I'd like to welcome Alex Ornelas to the districts.
Welcome aboard, Alex.
How do we get one of those shirts?
That is, that is one classy looking shirt, I gotta tell you.
Yeah, we get plain black ones.
Talk to Diana, she's one of the orders.
Those shirts are reserved for our maintenance employees. If anybody out in the field. Director, you need to get a real job.
Welcome to both of you. We think you're joining the best organization in Orange County and probably even further than Orange County, so both of you having long and successful careers with us, so welcome aboard. All right, did any of you want to question these two, or are we okay to move on?
No.
Okay, we'll go to item.
You have lots of fun.
Sir, you are up for the code enforcement report.
Yes, before David gives his report, I think you might want to notice in your staff report, there's one big change. The interim has been removed. So he's now our full-time co-enforcement officer.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Good morning, President, members of the board. I'm here this morning to present my report for the month of May. The report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of May, the CMSD code enforcement officer focused his efforts on patrols in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter instances of scavenging and residential trash carts left within the public view. In the month of May, the district saw a number of complaints filed with CMSD code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. As with most scavenging complaints, the alleged violations take place in the early mornings hours. In order to address resident concerns, the code enforcement officer is patrolling the streets by 6:30 a.m. Included below are instances of scavenging that were detected by the officer while he was investigating specific complaints. The month of May, my numbers have gone up a little bit. I encountered four different scavengers, different areas of the city. Two of them on the south end of the city, basically Newport boundary. Very cooperative. I did hand them everybody our warning notice, so. Any questions on that so far?
This, the scavengers, based on the, the lack of recycling places in Costa Mesa, I don't think there is a private one at all in Costa Mesa anymore. So they're all going to Orange Coast College if they're, if they're in the local area, I would say.
I'm assuming, I mean, I've literally seen the one gentleman that I've caught over on Eldon several times going, you know, through the fairgrounds heading towards OCC to recycle, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it looks to me, I mean, I don't think Stater Brothers has a recycling center outside.
I don't think there are any private ones at Costa Mesa anymore.
Used to be.
There used to be, you know, a whole bunch of them.
At Stater's, I, yeah, definitely.
The one at 19th and Placentia was pretty active. Arlene?
You know, I was wondering, being summer's gonna be coming up, or it is here, if we would be thinking about we have those tags on each barrel and it said no scaringer or something about the scavengers, it's not allowed. And it might be beneficial to think about this, you know, now for the summer when, you know, people go through the trash easier and the weather's good and they know that they're on bicycles or whatever and, you know, stop. Anyway, it's a thought.
When you say tags, where, where?
It was like a banner, you know, but it just says no soliciting scavengers. I had one, but I'm not sure what I did with it.
Yeah, maybe even CRNR. For the early summer there, I don't know, are they still changing their banners on the trucks quarterly?
It might cut down.
It might be one to look at. Thank you, yeah, break.
Just as a follow-up to that, as you're looking into it, obviously, how do you get them to the people, but at our next whatever event, some bumper stickers that people could take behind, something like that, because I doubt we're gonna mail them out to everyone. That would be pretty cost prohibitive. But some, just some added stuff to look at, because it's not a bad idea. And David, I just had a question on your 218 Ogol adventure with the gentleman who actually had carts in his truck.
Yes, sir. Kind of strange that, you know, I happened to see him driving down the street with three of our carts in the back of his truck. And so I just kind of watched where he went and he, I, he ends up going home and so I interacted with him and he kind of gave me, you know, like three or four different stories about, one was my friend found him on the freeway. And so I just basically said, you know, we're only allowed to have so many carts at these, you know, locations. And so I called the route manager and he came and grabbed those carts. One of them was a locking cart with the key in the hole. And so I'm like, you found that on the freeway? It is what it is. He cooperated. There were no problems. It was just funny that now I end up finding him, you know, scab. But again, very, you know, respectful and I explained to him that the reasons why, and so that that helps.
So that's what I was trying to uncover. So he was scavenging and then when you went to go make contact with him, that's where you found actual carts?
The trash carts were a different incident.
A totally different day or?
It just happened to be that when I pulled up this scavenging instance, that it was that same gentleman. And so we had had previous contact. He recognized me, I recognized him and
he, he actually had carts in the back of his pickup truck.
Three of them.
None, when you, you said he went to his house or a house?
Yeah, he went to his house. I was on Ogol.
Okay.
And I just noticed him, you know, like what, this is strange to me to see, you know, like someone have carts in their personal vehicle. And so that's what caught my attention and just, I followed him and he ended up pulling into his residence, which is a multifamily place.
Right.
So I think he was just kind of hoarding trash carts.
Among other things, but all right, well, thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to comment that I just got this in the mail yesterday. This is great.
Yeah, that was a nice surprise. I didn't know where to do that.
Yeah, tips for fighting food waste orders, all the orders. They're on the back here. Anyway, I thought this was great. Good PR.
I just have a question for Scott. Do we still have the numbers on the trash carts? Is that where you could kind of identify if we do?
I don't think they're consistent enough. We do have them, but I don't think it's consistent.
Yeah, that's, that's one of my things was, if those were attached to an address, we would be able to find out, you know, exactly where they came from, but we don't have that in Costa Mesa right now, so. In other words, the route manager did come and, you know, seize those carts, so. Trash container enforcement for the month of May. In the month of May, there were complaints reported to the district headquarters regarding trash carts in public view. The following is a list of locations which trash cart violations were found and addressed by the courtesy notice process. Total cases for the month of May, 111. A little bit lower than normal, but I took some vacation and been training Alex. Yes, sir.
David, what percentage of the violations that you've listed are called in? Is it a low percentage?
It is a lower percentage. I do receive, you know, some, some emails and things like that about trash carts in public view, but mainly it's just me going back into those trash areas and following up that everyone's putting carts away.
Okay.
Um, maybe a request or just kind of a heads up. We've been getting, and I think you guys have seen it in here, some complaints on Mondays on Placentia with carts. I mean, in the situation is carts, because of the parking situation on Placentia from 19th to just past Wilson to Stasi High School. I'd just be curious if, like on a Monday or a Tuesday, if you could kind of take a look at that for a couple, a couple of weeks.
What do you want them to report back on? What do you want to look for?
Are those carts getting put away at, at the end of, are they still out there on Tuesday morning? I think Monday is their pickup day.
It is, and, and I had a director from Scott previously about someone was clipped by, on their bicycle because of trash carts out, you know, in the bike lane over there.
Yeah.
And so I regularly go over in that area on Tuesdays after trash day just to try and curb that problem, but I'm not sure whether he's even any parking on Placentia.
Well, there, there is. I mean, they, they can park on the street, on parts of it. I actually had a resident who was a a very active cyclist. I mean, she rides all over. And she had made the comment that it was hard to ride her bike down. And we've had this conversation before, I think, Scott. I guess what I'm looking for is, are the carts really the problem, or is it, is it something else?
And so I was trying to work with the route manager at that time to get the carts out of the bike lane onto the, onto the curb. If you noticed, in between Victoria and Wilson, they put them on the curb because of especially on Wilson, there, there isn't any really room in the, in the street for them.
Exactly.
And somehow or another, this little section was told, but I was advised by residents that they were told not to put them on the curb, to put them in the street. So I don't know where, you know, things had fallen, you know, short, that route manager left and
I know this, the city does not want the carts on the curb because it violates ADA.
Yeah.
Requirement, so they, they do not want carts on the curb. They want them in the streets.
And logistically, the truck, the, the CRNR truck's not gonna be able to reach them between two cars, I don't think.
I think they can. I think they still have the ability to do that. But it's more of an ADA issues. They don't want to obstruct pathways. People walk on the sidewalk, so they want them on the streets.
Okay, all right, I just, if, I guess I'd still like to see, like a, a quick look on Tuesday more, a couple of Tuesdays.
Absolutely, I'll follow up and make sure to kind of deter that activity.
Okay, and, you know, actually with, with the city being so proactive in their bike lanes and bike lanes going on just about every street.
Yeah.
With that green person who gets hit on the sidewalk, you know. We're gonna hear more and more about this, I think, from the city.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, David.
Thank you. No further questions?
Thank you, permitted officer. All right, item.
Mr. President, Gina Tiriano will give you this report.
Yes, good morning, members of the board. Before you today is our congressional and state legislative reports. And you may notice that the format of the legislative reports has changed slightly. This was just in an effort to condense the information and hopefully make it a little bit easier to read. Additionally, I've linked all of the bill numbers to the official text, just in case you'd like more information beyond the summaries that I provided. In our congressional report, you'll notice that the focus points are primarily bills that would expand funding for wastewater and food waste recycling infrastructure. We are continuing to follow these bills, although there hasn't been much movement on them so far. And in our state report, there are a number of key issues that the legislature is attempting to address, including regulation of PFAS and products. I won't be discussing those today since they have more of a direct impact on water and water treatment agencies, but they're included in the report for your information. Other than that, there are a few bills that I wanted to briefly point out. The first is AB 759, which is on page one. This bill is sponsored by the California Association of Sanitation Agencies, otherwise known as CASA. And it seeks to broaden the way that sanitary districts can expend funds. Current law requires that the board approve all warrants with a signed resolution. Whereas this bill would allow the board to authorize the district treasurer to expend funds without board approval as long as the funds are within the district's approved budget. Board approval would still be required if the funds exceed the approved budget. I've marked this as a support bill since it allows sanitary districts some plus, some flexibility with regards to payments, but it doesn't obligate us to make this change. The next bill is AB 557, and this is on page four. This is another cleanup bill related to holding remote public meetings. And it would essentially reinstate AB 361, which is the bill that allowed the board to meet remotely during a declared state emergency, a state of emergency, as long as a resolution is passed to authorize this. The only difference is that it extends the timeline for having to pass that resolution from 30 days to 45 days. So that, that way the timeline is a little more flexible for agencies who don't meet as often. Another bill, AB 895, this is on page five. And this bill, I'm keeping an eye on it because it's asking CalRecycle to study the progress that's being made toward the state's organic waste reduction goal of 75% by 2025. And it's asking them to amend the regulations based on those findings. So I know this is something the board has asked us to keep an eye on. It's clear that there's concern in the legislature about meeting these goals. So we just want to make sure we stay abreast of any new information about changing regulations since that would impact us.
Is this the one that the Little Hoover Commission's focused on as well?
Um, I'm not sure if this is that same one, but I don't remember off the top of my head. I can take a look.
Little Hoover Commission's kind of throwing a broad blanket out there saying we're not gonna meet it, why continue? And so Little Hoover Commission yields some power, but not enough to, to be a drastic thing, but I, I just wondered if this was the one that they had focused on, so.
I think I read that they had just made a recommendation. It wasn't specifically about this bill, but it was along the same lines.
Good.
And the last bill I wanted to talk about today was AB 1594. This is on page eight. And this bill was brought to the board's attention back in March. It would require that if any state regulation requires public agencies to purchase zero emission, medium, or heavy duty vehicles, that they have to take into account the vehicle's ability to maintain reliable service, to respond to emergencies, and to provide mutual aid. This was concerning to us because wastewater cleaning truck manufacturers aren't making EV trucks and the prototypes have been cost prohibitive for most agencies. So luckily, this bill seems to be moving forward pretty steadily, so we're hopeful that it will pass. As mentioned, all the bills in the report are linked to the legislature's website for more information. You can find their current status, the official texts, the committee analysis and voting records, all on their website. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, a quick comment. I think this is the first time you've given us the, the position of our senator and our assembly person. I didn't remember seeing that before.
Yeah, I thought it might be helpful to see where they stand on it.
I just wanted to thank you for, that is very much appreciated to see where our folks and what attention we need to pay of our folks that represent us. So thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
I just have a question about the Little Hoover Commission. Did they address 1383 also and recommend it to be slowed down?
Yeah, they recommended that, but CalRecycle is obviously pushing back and they're not gonna adhere to their recommendations. They, they're CalRecycle is gonna proceed status quo as it is right now.
Would, would you send information? I haven't read that.
Sure, I could find the report and send it to the board.
Thank you.
I don't think they published a report, did they? Wasn't it just out of their committee?
There is a written report.
Is there?
Yes.
I'd like to see that as well, Scott. Okay. Okay, any legislative comments for Gina?
I, I would, there's one, and I apologize, I can't remember the name, but I think it would actually probably be more for Mark's area of expertise, but it's regarding workers' comp and CSLB. And I say that because it's gonna change some bidding requirements potentially if it goes through, so as we're about to go talk about some no bid contracts, things like, just take a look at it. I, I could email you later, the bill, I just, yeah, I'll, I'll find it.
It tied to prevailing wage, or?
No, it seems like everything is, but no, this one actually is just because there's people who are getting CSLB licenses, which you have to have. You're also supposed to have workers' comp. That doesn't always happen and they issue fake workers' comp things and then this thing's gonna, I think, tie it to CSLB, which is gonna cost a lot of money for enforcement, and you know what that means. So it's a good bill in theory. And we'll see where it goes from there. But I'll shoot you an email with the bill. And I agree with President Schaefer. Our local electeds keep adding their positions if they have some. That's very helpful. Thank you.
I don't remember seeing anywhere where any of them voted against anything, you know, as I was scrolling through. They all voted in favor, so that tells you how our legislature set it.
Gina, I have this from Marcus. I want to give it to you.
Oh, sure, I'll take that.
Because it's full of a lot of the legislation stuff. But as I'm looking at it, you know, I don't know where we're at on half of this. You know, like the audit, the time of that, you know, different things. So anyway, I'll, I'll talk to you after the meeting on this.
Sure, I'll look at that. Thank you.
The thing with the going from gas to electric and everything, I just learned, I didn't realize yesterday about the ferry, the bubble ferry. Scott was telling me it was because of that, right? They wanna anyway, that's why they're getting rid of the bubble ferry, or they can't, can't afford to buy a new ferry, electric ferry.
They're potentially getting rid, but they're, they're squirming with the cost.
Yeah, aren't we all? Gina, thank you. All right, number four, Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark Davis, our district treasurer, will be giving his report.
Morning, Mr. President, board members. At a, as you guys were going through your budget meetings and about the upcoming budget, there was some questions that had come out related to impact of hiring new employees and what impact could have with their pension liability and is this particular item, we, we had added in their OPEB, other post-employment benefits liability as, as well. And at your May study session, Caitlin had presented costs that it would be on a, on an annual basis when, for hiring a couple of new employees is what contributions, additional contributions may be over about the next 10 years for those new employees. The liability piece, I was asked to come talk to you today a little bit about that, how that gets impacted. And the real quick answer there is there's really no way to be able to determine how your liability, if you have a liability, will be impacted. So I want to go over a few things as to why that, why that is the case. At present, the district has three pension plans under, under PERS and those, and those plans are really based upon when an employee started their service here at the district. You have a plan for those employees that were hired before July 1, 2011. And their benefit, they receive upon retirement 2% of their salary at age 55. And from July 11 to the end of 2012, that changed. You added a second tier to your, to your benefits and, and that pension benefit is 2% at 60. And then those employees that are hired after January 1, 2013, their benefit is 2% at 62. So depending upon the makeup and the employees and when they were hired here is the, is the benefit they're going to receive and the contributions that those that you make on behalf of those employees are based upon those particular plans. Now, everybody that's being hired now is all under that new plan at 2% at, at 62. Prior to 2015 for pensions and 2017 for other post-employment benefits, local governments never had to record pensions liabilities or other post-employment benefits on their books. It was just a number out there. It was a big disclosure in your financial statements, but it, it's a big number and it's a big impact to local, to local governments. And so accounting standards changed in those two years and from that point forward, you were required to put those liabilities on your, on your books. And in the, in the staff report, there is a table going back to the, to that point in time as to what your pension liability and your OPEB liabilities were. You've, other than this current year that we just finished and 2022, June 30, 22, your pension li, you've always had a pension liability. In 2022, it actually flipped to an asset. You were super funded. You were overfunded in your life in, for your pension. For your OPEB, you've always been overfunded from your OPEB standpoint. And that really happened is when you implemented an OPEB program, the district or the, the board at that point in time made a pre-funding with their, with OPEB and put a fair amount of money down to not have a liability. And you can see over the last eight, nine years, you haven't had a liability. You've been super funded. The reason why it's, it flipped in 2022, especially on the pension side and became an asset, is just the way that the market has gone. CalPERS invests in, they can invest in a lot of different things that you cannot invest in. They can invest in real estate. They can invest in stocks. They can invest in a tremendous amount of variety of things. Those assets did very well and performed very well during the year that was looked at. And so when we, when we see what, what the liability is, we say it's a June 30, 2022 liability. That's what we put on your books. That's based two years ago. And so it's really looked at a couple of years ago as to what the calculation gets done and it's determined what your assets and liabilities are going to be. And all of the determination of what your assets liabilities are, are based upon an actuarial valuation. And that's why we can't calculate and tell you, if you hire two employees today, you know, 10 years down the road, here's what your liability is gonna be. We just can't do that. On the, on your pension side, the actuaries use a number of assumptions, same with OPEB, to be able to calculate what your contribution rates and your liabilities are gonna be at present. They use a discount rate of 7.15% in calculating that. They have an inflation factor of two and a half percent. They assume, based upon the age of individuals and how many years of service they have, they assume salary increases during that period of time. May not be in line with what your actual salary increases are. These are assumptions that are made by the actuaries. When, when the actuaries look at and calculate this, they look for every single individual that the district is contributing for. They assign a mortality to them based upon their tables. How long is that person going to live? And that's gonna determine how much in benefit they're gonna get, they're gonna get paid out over time. And then there's a cost of living factor that is included and it's up to two and a half percent. It's whatever actual cost of living is, but up to two and a half percent. There are similar in the staff report, there's also similar actuarial assumptions that are used for your OPEB calculation. There are similar in the staff report. There's also similar actuarial assumptions that are used for your OPEB calculation. A couple of the difference there is OPEB is really for medical benefits after employees retire that you're contributing to and they can buy insurance afterwards, after they retire. And so there's trend, there's healthcare trend rates that the actuaries include in determining what they believe that your assets or liabilities are going to be at the end of any, at the end of any given fiscal year. When they scrolling down a little bit more on the on the staff report, and this is also disclosed in your financial statements, there is a sensitivity in relation to how your pension asset or your pension liability may fluctuate. If your, if the discount rate, just looking at the discount rate, if the discount rate goes up by one percent or it goes down by one percent, you you have a swing of about four hundred thousand dollars, one way or the other. If it goes down, your liability goes up by four hundred thousand. If they reduce the discount rate, then your liability will go down by by four hundred thousand. I'm sorry, it was just the other way around. If they increase the rate, your asset goes up. If if they decrease the rate, then you're then you you have more of a liability. PERS very seldom changes that discount rate. They've changed it once in my career. And that was just about four, five years ago. And that had a big impact at the time. Inflation, not inflation, but their assets were not performing well at all. Governments were getting hit with very large employer contribution rates and large increase. And so they had to come up with some way to be able to help governments out and and reduce that. So they reduced the discount rate. It was at seven point six five percent. They reduced it by half of, half a percent down to seven point one five, one five percent. When they do that, it's not, it was not an immediate impact. They took whatever that difference was and they spread it out over a twenty-year timeframe. And so you're over the, over the time that they started doing that for the next twenty years thereafter, you would see the benefit of that reduction in the discount, in the discount rate. So with that, that that's really, I wanted to give just kind of a little bit of a background on why I really can't answer the question on what the actual liability is or going to be or it could impact could be if you hire an employee. It really depends upon the experience of that employee, the age of that employee, how long that employee is gonna be expected to live under the CalPERS tables. And and just because an employee leaves here and goes maybe to work for another agency, they're still cut on your roles. They're still factored into your calculation of your actuarial liability. So employees that have left here, you're still paying. It's included in your rate to be able to get them funded because at some point in time, they are gonna retire. And even though they may not have vested here, when they when they retire, a portion of their retirement is going to come from here based upon their years of service and whatever plan that it's happened to be in on. So, that's a lot of information. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Just a quick question. When you look at the the pension actuarial assumptions versus the OPEB actuarial assumptions, why can't they have, this is very, you can't get a salary increase from retali- or that one, but yet in the OPEB, they can do it. Is that because they're assuming when a person retires under the OPEB, that's gonna be kind of locked? Or why can't they put that assumption in the first one and not the second one?
And and it's two different actuaries that are doing that. For the the Calpers, you're in what's called a cost-sharing plan. So you don't have your own pension plan. You're part of a group that includes many smaller local agencies. And so you can't pinpoint so much as to what salary increases may may be because it's a very large group of government agencies.
Okay.
Your OPEB plan is just you.
Just us. Okay, that that makes, that law of large numbers thing comes under the pension a lot more than it would be. Okay, I I think I get it.
Good. Mark, just, I I understand you cannot put a hard number percent. I get it. I know that. Assuming we know some certain things, could you not at least put a percentage or or some sort of value on, okay, look, if they're vested and they're here the whole time, we're just assuming this. And there, you could put a percentage on someone who's between thirty and forty and forty and fifty and fifty and sixty, so on. Couldn't you tie at least a percentage with everything else being historically equal and at least have a ballpark on what we're talking about?
We could, and it wouldn't necessarily tie into and all that the Calpers actuary would do. But yes, we could look at what you have here, the current employees that exist here right now. Don't have information on, you know, the people that have left that are still
Right.
into that. But for the current people that hear, you can say, okay, well, your contract, your liability at this point in time is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Your assets are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You have, you know, twenty-five employees. And if you add two more employees, maybe that's another ten thousand dollars in additional life. But you could do very generic, high-level calculations like that. But it really then is gonna, things that we can't really do are how how the how the CalPERS portfolio performs. And that's really a big part of what the calculation is. But we could give you worst case on something like, something like that. So, yeah, the answer to that is yes.
Okay, cuz I was, I was just, my non-financial accounting brain going, all right. We know the salary ranges for each job position, in job position, not employee, but job position. We know cost of living, we know salary increases. And then we kind of know Calpers history. Could at least get a ballpark range on certain things. I don't know. It's just, that's what I was trying to figure out. Like, I think it could be done. It's not anywhere exact, but.
Right, right. We could do a calculation. And if you perpetuated that calculation over time here, it might lead to decent information of which you can base decisions on.
Got it. All right. Thank you, Mark.
You use the term, we were overfunded. Are we still currently overfunded or are we?
At June thirty, two thousand twenty-two, you were overfunded. Calpers does, they're going through their actuarial valuation now for the June thirty, two thousand twenty-three period. But that's based on actual experience in two thousand twenty-one. So I, everything is a two-year look back when they do those those actuarial evaluations. Really don't know.
Then my second question.
Wild swing.
Do you think, do you think we're underfunded? Do you think that we're underfunded at the end of, in June? Just a question. That's kind of what Brett's looking at too.
You know, given where, given where we've seen some of them, the volatility in the market, I think you're gonna be similar to where you're at this past, this past year. I think you'll still probably be overfunded.
Because I always ask you the same question every year, you know.
Money bags.
According to my crystal ball, yeah, I think you.
You know, with paying that money a long time ago, many years ago, it really puts them in a good position.
On the OPEB side, yeah, on the OPEB side.
Do we still have any employees? You had mentioned the the first tier. Is anybody hired for two thousand eleven? Right, twenty? But are there any retirees that were, are still part of that? Like Joan? Okay, just curious. Wendy, Wendy would be, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a fair amount out there.
The, you know, the recent trends on inflation, I think are gonna probably help their calculations on June, they finish up, except that, like you said, it goes back two years and so maybe it won't have an effect.
Right, right. Their their assumption, when they, when they actually, you know, they use twenty twenty, we get
To two and a half.
And we're looking at seven, eight percent inflation compared to what they include in their assumptions of two percent.
Yeah.
It it could, we could have a big swing the other way.
Yeah, that's what I want. Okay, all right. Anything else for Mr. Davis? Thank you. You make it, you make it easy. You make it easy to understand. I mean, you 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 talk CPA to us, and we
Well, I didn't understand how this affects the operation of the sewage treatment plant.
Did you? Okay, all right.
Maybe their budgets, but.
Let's move to item five.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark Esker, our District Engineer, will be giving his report.
All right.
Good morning, everybody. Today I'll be discussing our no bidding requirement and seeing changes that I'll bring bringing back to the Board of Directors for consideration at a at a board meeting. Specifically, Operations Code, Chapter four point oh four, purchasing. And I only want to limit my request to changing the no bidding requirement. My proposed changes were not meant to be comprehensive. And it's my understanding, a district committee, or or there is some folks looking at the entire ordinance and district policies. So I reframed from providing comments to the entire ordinance. So today I just want to focus on the no bidding limit. And we did receive comments from a couple of folks, Jim Mosier, as you know. And he couldn't be here this morning, so I'd like to mention that his comments. And then I received some comments from our legal counsel. The district, Mr. Mosier made some recommendations regarding improvements to the overall wording within the ordinance, the purchasing ordinance. And and I think that the districts can very easily incorporate Mr. Mosier's comments because they're really more editorial than they are, you know, saying we should limit costs or dollar amounts. Or he didn't even specifically, I will point out, didn't even say that he was against us raising the no bidding limit from five thousand to ten thousand dollars. So, and then legal counsel also had some wordsmithing that they recommended. And I think that we can incorporate their comments into the ordinance when the district brings back any changes based on what the committee is bringing forward. So that with that being said, I'm proposing that we we change the no bidding requirement from five thousand to ten thousand dollars. When you look at the buying power that I have to to ask a contractor to do anything like, hey, I need a backhoe to go dig a hole, expose that pipe, I need to take a look at something. It's really diminished my my buying power to be able to quickly go out and do assessments and other other work that really leads to design and major capital improvements. And I'll come back with an example of that. But I would did like to mention that inflation indexes like E and R, which is engineering, construction costs, or Consumer Price Index, U for Los Angeles, the buying power has significantly decreased from either two thousand, two thousand ten, or any other time period you could, you could. I can give you a number based on what you, how far back you'd like us to go. But if you look at two thousand, we, our buying power is cut essentially half. And if you look at the time period of twenty-ten, it's about fifty to seventy-five percent less buying power. The, as information, Orange County Sanitation District and Irvine Ranch Water District, their no bidding limits are ten thousand dollars and thirty-two thousand dollars respectively. I would say that our agency has adopted the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting. I'm not gonna go into their limits because I'm assuming that we've adopted that such a period of time ago that you're probably very aware, more so than I am, of what the limits are. But I will say, our agency is much more stringent than what the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act provides for. And just one example is, they say that any public project of sixty thousand dollars or less does not require bids. So we're much more stringent than that number. And we, and I think we, it's probably a good idea that we are. But what I am asking for today is to double our number, and that does a few things for us. It would save me between two weeks and four weeks potentially for projects that say fall more than five thousand dollars, but are less than ten thousand dollars. In addition, it's gonna save us some money because when I have to get bids, even if they're informal bids, I need to put together a document that allows me to can basically compare bidder one, two, three, and four based on quality, level of effort, requirements for that particular job. And depending on what reference you look at, American Society of Civil Engineers, as an example, used to say, oh, it costs about twenty percent or thirty percent or ten percent of a of a contract, depending on the capital amount. That should be what the the design fees are for that particular, that particular design. And that's, that design is what we use to tell a contractor, give us a bid. So, again, municipal building projects, you'll see numbers anywhere from ten percent to thirty-three percent depending on how expensive the the project is. For projects, I'll say, less than a hundred thousand dollars, they're closer to thirty, thirty percent. So let's say it's a ten thousand dollar project, we'll save three thousand dollars, probably a little bit less, could be a little bit more. Because again, the smaller the project, at some point, the design effort is just as expensive as the construction effort. And so I want to save time and I want to save money, and that's why I'm asking for this raise. And I'll say, for example, I need to break into our tech eye pipe that goes across the fairgrounds because we're planning to use that for a host pipe, so we can build a second force main from the Eldon Pump Station over to the entry of the fairground, the main entry to the fairgrounds. Unfortunately, the ASBILs weren't correct. And we did a good thing back in the day when we built our new force main back then, was we we sealed up the entrance to the to the tech eye pipe. But the ASBIL showed that the opening was still there. We went to CCTV camera so that I could have the consultant properly design and make sure that we don't have to. We could use that existing pipe as a host pipe. Turns out, ASBILs were wrong. Now I have to hire a contractor, dig a hole, break into the pipe so I can put a camera in. It's probably gonna cost us thirty thousand dollars worth of construction. And if I don't have this type of flexibility, it's gonna cost me a little extra money then to get, design a specification or plan or something to do that work. So with that, I'm asking to allow us a little bit of leniency for the smaller projects. And I will say that historically, well, historically, the last twelve months, we had about twenty-three projects that were under the five thousand dollar limit. So let's call it twenty-five, so I could do the math in my brain. That's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of work that was under the no bidding limit that we gave away. Then between five thousand and ten thousand dollars, it's, let's say it's twelve thousand, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that. So by raising the limit from five thousand to ten thousand, we'll probably go from about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of work to about two hundred to two hundred and forty thousand dollars of work that we will be issuing to contractors without getting bids. So we'll basically double the amount of work or that we, and but your point is the liability of you giving us this this added authority is only up to two hundred to two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. So really, in our budget, it's it's not the biggest number that we're, you know, we need to concern ourselves with. Again, just to remind you, Mr. Mosier really wasn't against, in his in his email, he wasn't really against raising the limit. He was more focused on other items to clarify the ordinance. So with that, I'll turn, I'll open to questions and discussions with you. And I would like to hear your thoughts and recommendations on this matter so that when I develop the agenda item to bring it before you, I can address any issues you might want me to to address.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in general, I think it's a wise deal, but I want to make sure we're doing it the right way. My first question is, you kind of, you actually read my mind, so that was gonna be my first question, a percentage of projects. But so if I heard you correctly, roughly fifty percent of our projects are less than ten grand? But you said twenty-five and twenty-five, I'm just kind of.
Well, I'll say, no, it's not just, I'm not particular ordinance, and let me, and I apologize for not being very clear on this. The ordinance is for all purchasing, as the way it's written today. So, so my comment was, over the last twelve months, we have issued So so my comment was, over the last 12 months, we have issued 23 purchase orders for $5,000 or less across the entire agency. So to say they're all mine or all public works, that that's really not accurate because it's for all purchasing. So I don't have that percentage of how much is for construction related activities like me hiring a backhoe or some other piece of equipment to do things that I need to do. So so it's 23 at $5,000 for the entire agency. So let's call that number for talking purposes, $125,000, $1,000 a year that we spend on those types of purchases. What I was then maybe not so succinctly saying is to move from 5,000 to 10,000, we would probably add another 120,000 to that to that 125,000 for a total of $245,000 a year. So we could conceivably go from 125 to 245 in that range if this if we go forward with this type of an increase.
Okay. And then to clarify that further, so let's just say, I can't think of something actually really good, but let's just say the district needs to buy 100 laptop computers for everyone. Normally, you would get that sort of purchase through a broker, maybe my blah blah blah. So that's going to be over five grand, and let's just say it's under 10 grand. That applies to this deal as well, correct?
Yes, based on the way the ordinance is written, it would apply to those types of purchases as well, computer purchases, furniture purchases, carpeting purchases. Whatever it is, you need pencils. Not that we're going to buy more than $5,000 for the pencils. It's anything. Yes.
But okay, so I want that to be clear that this applies, not just capital improvement, this applies to everything. So then one concern, because I've seen it with the California listing laws as what they are. Here's what government agencies are doing. They're taking $10 million project, which let's just say for us, it's a $100,000 project. And they're sub or they're dividing, subdividing, and subdividing again to make it a no bid contract. And it's a real problem. I, from my standpoint, would like to see this protected, at least on the construction side of things, where I like so let's just say, let's say you got $50,000 contract and you subdivide it in such a way and schedule it out that you're going to no bid $5,000 a pop at it. So you see what I'm saying?
Sure. I I what what I think I hear you saying is that how do we ensure that whether, no matter who it is and whatever the purchase is, we don't that we get underneath the reporting. I think there's two or three things going on here. One, we have adopted the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting, which really is about transparency. I will also say that our general manager provides you with currently provides you with a list of all contracts that he has led. I can't remember if that list currently has these no bid projects, but they very easily could be added on to that so that our Board of Directors and you all can can basically examine everything that we give under the no bidding requirements. And as far as breaking up the jobs, typically our jobs are President's Pump Station or West Bluff, West Bluff Pump Station Rehab, or we have the Baker Sewer Replacement up here at the corner that I'm working on. That's about a 44, $45,000 job. They're really one compact job, and for public works, and I'll speak to public works job that because that's what I'm mostly involved with. They tend to be one big project. Now, there might be little things here and there, like, for example, I'm trying to up update or bring our building here into compliance with our sewer regulations, and you'll see construction going on out here. So I've added cleanouts, separated our one of our sewers from our neighbor sewer, and I've brought basically this or bringing this property up to current standards and ordinance or ordinance prior to bringing in a $400,000 contractor to redo the landscaping, because the last thing I want to do is a couple or three or four years from now, tear up the landscaping to upgrade us and bring us into compliance with our own ordinance. So when I say split, I think it was it was it's beneficial to get that work done before we get a contractor in here. And it's a and there are different kinds of contractors, but that would be the closest thing that I say would be splitting a contract. And I'm being forthright with you that that I try to use my best judgment, and I work with my general manager to to do the right things. And he I'm hoping that he reports, and we're able to report this to you going forward.
The problem is giving us the report of the no bid bag. What are we going to do about it at that point, whether we even know it's like, yeah, whatever? It's being abused in California by public agencies, up and down the state. It's a real problem. You guys, full faith and confidence that you're not going to game the system. We just went over Calpers. You and all of us won't be here forever, and we put this into place without the proper protections. The next group that comes in all of a sudden abuses it even more. There's language that others have found to kind of ensure that the taxpayer rate pairs are protected in this no bid contract because it is a scam. It just it's a scam in the state of California. So.
And I believe that that's illegal on public works contracts. They cannot split contracts like that to for those bids on a public works project. Now, are they splitting contracts for non-public works? Possibly, but that's, you know, that's their ordinance. So that's their ordinance they're violating. We don't do that here. The only maybe close resemblance to that is that if we're doing a pump station improvement at rehab, we might go out to bid on the pumps alone because it could save us money. Because if we add the pumps to the contract, the contract is going to add markup on it. So it's it's more economical for us to bid that out separately. Sure. So that could be maybe viewed as splitting, but I don't consider that. It's more like be more fiscal prudent, in my opinion, because we're saving money doing that way. But we do not split contracts, but to to make you sleep better, we could definitely add language to our our ordinance, say we're splitting this is with is forbidden.
That's what I'm ultimately getting at. Something that says that, you know, 10 lawyers will all disagree on it, but at least it's something protecting everyone. That'd be great. And then and then last question, is the 10, is that future proofed enough for you for the next five, six years, or are we going to be needing to look at this again in two years?
You took my question.
I'll say, yeah.
No, I I agree, just a tad, if you don't mind. Why are we in with inflation and everything? Why aren't we going to 20?
Well, I will. One answer is, I believe the there's another state law that that governs sanitary I think it's a 15,000 or $1,000 limitation, I believe. And so I'd have to go back and double check that limit. So the most I believe that we as a sanitary district could increase our our numbers to $15,000.
We also did it. We also did it for your comfort level. You know, if you want to increase it, we welcome that, but that's why we came to $10,000. We want to make sure you're comfortable.
All right. Can we at least take a look at that law and tell us that sanitary district law and let us know when we make a decision on this?
Well, I'll tell you what we can do. I've got to bring this back. This is just for talking purposes today. And this, you're not really taking action to approve this change. What I will do to bring this back either later this month or July, depending on what the general manager wants me to do or when to bring this back, is I can I can insert that number, but I believe it's $15,000. I'm pretty certain, like 99% certain.
Let's put the cat back in the bag. Yeah, but if we can, let's take a look at that option.
And then and then just if part of this in the staff report, if we can look at Mr. Mosher's comments, legal, just see how it all fits in. That way, at least we get a little comfort that.
Sure.
Then hopefully, maybe a few of the suggestions I suggested bid protections and things like.
Yeah, I think some warehouses in that talk about state law and how it's illegal to split. We can certainly add that language in here. I will tell you, and and you know, the general manager and I and others organization have various things I want to do is lose my civil engineering license or go to prison for doing some dumb thing, you know, so I would I but I agree with you, and that's very easily to add those.
Three employees just got busted for doing it. They're not going to prison, not here. Let me clarify, in another area in the state of California. So it's going on, it's been going on, and people aren't getting punished for it. So.
Why we're talking about this type of discussion, should are you comfortable with your 50,000 or do you need to increase it to 60,000 with the public works?
Well, again, it's it's your comfort level, really. It's it's what you're it's what you're comfortable. If if you want to go to 60, it's 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 your purview. We'll do whatever you want. I mean.
Public works in general.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I just thought I'd throw that out for consideration.
But again, we do. I'm not sure we want to apply that to everything.
No, I know.
Because. So 6,000 would just be applied to a public works project.
Just public works projects. It's something for discussion, you know.
I I guess I would like to hear more about that. I mean, because right now, the way the ordinance is written, it like I, well, I may be facetious when I said it. You know, I could buy $12,000, $10,000 if this goes through, 10,000, 12,000, $15,000 worth of pencils. I'm not sure if if are you saying you want to limit non-public works? Or is it matter to the board?
It matters to me, but I don't want to. I'm not sure we want to go for the full kill at the 60 for everything, certainly, but.
What we could do is maybe try, if the board's comfortable with 15,000, let's try 15,000 and and we, you know, we we think we need to recommend increase, we can bring it back to you.
If we see a bunch of pencils being brought.
I I think I I think Mark made a good justification with the inflation going up, you know, since.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, we're why why go through this quicker than we normally, I mean, 10 years ago, we didn't have to worry about this. But now with us inflation, let's just be realistic.
And we can we can split this, and we could say 15,000 applies to no bidding 15,000. We could say applies to every purchase, but then perhaps if if the board would consider raising our general manager's authority, we could say for public works projects, if that it gives you a level of comfort, because I'll tell you, my purchases are probably more expensive than most of the other purchases in this agency. So I guess I will say I'm a little bit selfishly bringing this to you because I need to get some things done. And if you want me to deliver the CIP that I think this agency needs to deliver, I need to get some of these things amended. And so giving the general manager some authority for public works and public works related services like engineering consulting, that would be very beneficial to deliver the projects that we need. If you want to limit everything else, other purchases to the 15,000, we can make, we can do that.
I also want to just caution the board, if you are considering $60,000 for no bid public works project, you might come under some scrutiny from the public.
Oh, yeah.
Particularly from the press. There has been, there's been a recent story in the Voice of OC about the authority city managers have signing no bids. And and it's it got some, it got a lot of a lot of press and and they were they were critiquing city managers having authority up to $50,000, $60,000. As a result of that, a lot of the city councils were reducing that back down like 25,000 because we're getting so much pushback from the public and from from the press. So I just want to caution you that if you if you are considering that that could happen, you know, and and why I want to avoid that.
I could back off that suggestion.
Good call.
But but we we can do, we can do, and and right now, I think there's some limitations on informal bids and the the going off the list, because there's four different levels of authority here. We can, we would, we could say it's not an, we're not going to give a no bid for a $60,000 contract, but we can follow the either the the 5,000 to 30,000, we do get three bids. So you're still bidding the work. It's not a no bid. It's 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 just that you don't have to put ads in the paper, and you don't have to advertise twice and go through all the requirements associated with that. And then and then there is an informal bidding procedure that will be used, and then that could, you know, you're getting bids, formal bids for you could say 60,000 to 125 rather than 30 to 125. So you're still getting bids for any project over the 15,000. It's just whether it's follows the three bids, the informal bidding procedure or a formal bidding procedure for anything over 15, if that's the number we choose, you would get bids for everything else. So it's not like Scott or, excuse me, our general manager would give a no bid for a 60, 70, $30,000 contract. You still have to get three bids based on our purchasing authority, even if you were changes authority to the $60,000 number, we would still get three bids.
The average citizen will not differentiate that. There's only a few of us up here that would understand what you're talking about. But when we get to Scott's point, and the members of the public will show up, they won't know that difference and.
Fair enough. And that's why I I really, I think, I'm talking to Mark about this, keep it simple. That's why we just focus on the no bidding. That's why let's go 5,000, 10,000. If you're comfortable 15,000, that's great, but maybe we that's keeps it simple, clean, everything else is in place. Doesn't doesn't raise any eyebrows. You know, that's that's our recommendation.
And you'd brought up something on the engineer. So talk to me about the consulting. Where do you value? Because if it's a three-year consulting contract, but at seven grand a year, how's that factor into this?
That would be considered a whole value of it.
So you're looking. Okay, so as long as that's clear in this ordinance, that's going to be the other thing that's brought up is like consulting and.
Yeah, there's, we have requirements to request proposal, develop scopes of work, request proposals, and promote, I think most of not all these contracts that at least I've been involved with in a few couple of years I've been here. We bring those items back with you. For example, I we and we hired Kleinfelder. I brought that back to you with the scores, and that's typical of what we do when we require RFPs and from from consultants and contractors.
If the consultant is over 125,000.
Yeah.
So if it's less than 25,000, then I have authority to sign, but I do let the board know, hey, the chairman assigned this contract, this is the value. But but we look at the the total value of the contract, whether it was three years or five years, what is the total value?
Okay.
That's how we look at it.
Just making sure.
A minor question. You said Irvine Ranch is 32,000. Is the water act different? Yes. Yeah, there's the Sanitary District Act, Sanitation District Act, and the Water District Act seem to be slightly different in many different aspects of requirements. We're governed by the Sanitary District Act Director Root.
For the Health and Safety Code.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our items of study. Any closing comments or director comments? Staff, anything else?
Sorry, I don't know. We got to get out of here, but I just wanted to thank them. But CRR support of the Newport Mesa Soccer Classic a week ago, they supplied us with a lot of I called them disposable trash cans, the cardboard trash cans that we had all over the field and the the people that we use to help clean up. We left the three sites, Coast Mesa High School, Davis Field, and Jack Hammett probably better than where we found it, and that's big thanks to their efforts for helping us out there. So I just thank them. And we had 177 teams and over 2,500 kids participate in one week of soccer. It was awesome. So my thanks to them for their help.
I was there for two of the games.
There you go. Awesome. You saw the insanity.
You have the closest fields except for parking.
Oh, perfect, perfect, exactly. All right.
Yeah. I just wanted to say to everybody who's a father, Happy Father's Day.
Hi, I echo that. If you're a father, you're you're doing good. For a mother, you're doing even better. But you already had your day, so. All right, nothing else, and I'll adjourn the meeting. Welcome again, Alex. Thank you. Thanks for sticking this out. You two are troopers. Well, stayed awake.
Be thankful it's not a city council meeting at midnight.
Midnight.